Assistant Principal and Scott Miller, the School Superintendent. So if you are here, thank you very much for that. Before I get too much further here, we do have a gentleman here from Luna that's offering Spanish interpretation services. He just wants to make a quick announcement before I get started.
¿Hay alguien aquí que necesite interpretación en español?
The Norfolk Southern Railroad here in this part of Hammond is a decades-old problem. The frequency of train stoppages and train delays have plagued this part of town for a long time. And it's not just waiting for trains going, it's stopped trains, sometimes days on end. It's pedestrians and walkers going across to stop trains and that dangerous activity. And it's the impact it has on the traveling public and EMS services. The city of Hammond heard so much about this that they wanted to conduct a survey to get a better gauge on the temperature of such a project. And this happened a little over a year ago. The city sent out surveys in the area, within the project area, and received over 600 responses. Sixty percent of the people said that they are, have issues with the train, or delays related to the train at least once a day. Eighty-three percent of the responders said this is a problem that the city needs to address. Seventy-five percent said that a new bridge is the best option to address the problem. And sixty-three percent of the responders said a new train option is the best approach to solve the problem. But that's just one thing. We're here to hear from everybody, not just in a survey. This is an important part of the project development, to hear from you, to enter comments into the record and then to respond to those comments. And I'm going to talk a lot tonight about how we can do that. So just a quick agenda on the evening. I will introduce my team very quickly. We're going to talk about the need and purpose of the project. I'll talk about some of the processes related to the project development and public involvement, the alternatives that we've studied, how we selected a preliminary preferred alternative, and then also how you can continue to help with the process. So just real quick on the team. Endot's Project Manager Jason Holder unfortunately had a last-minute thing come up, so he can't attend. I know he's watching on the live stream right now. Cassie Bejek is with Endot's La Porte District. She's been assisting with some of the communications on the project. Dean Button, who I know is here tonight, the Hammond City Engineer. Myself, I'm Nick Batta. I'm with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly. We are the engineering company hired by Endot for the project. And I have also one of my team leaders, Jeff Picker, here. He's been staffing one of the boards. I have many other team members here with me tonight. Their names are listed on the left. If your name is listed on the left, folks, would you mind just raising your hand so everybody can see that you're here? Thank you. I also, as you can see, we have ASL interpretation provided by TrainWinds and then also Spanish interpretation, as I've said before. The need and purpose of the project is really the foundation of the process. And for this, it's really a threefold level. The first project need is the exposure that people experience, both vehicular and pedestrians, with all of the at-grade railroad crossings of surface streets in this area. The second is related to the extreme delays that can be caused specifically by stopped trains, for those trains inbound from the Chicagoland area that need to stop and wait for other train congestion. And then the third need is the effects that this has on emergency response. So this purpose, the purpose of this project is then to address those needs. So to improve the accessibility across the Norfolk Southern Railroad in this part of the city, to reduce the delays associated by emergency responders, and to make the at-grade railroad crossings safer. The effects the project has on the EMS community is a really critical one, so much so that the city funded their own study to provide some data to get an understanding of what it means. This area of Hammond is serviced primarily by Fire Stations Six and Eight, which are on opposite sides of the railroad. But only Fire Station Eight is fully equipped with the apparatus for the kind of the normal, everyday responses. The emergency response study found that Fire Station Eight, when there is a train, whether it be crossing or stopped, could take as long as 20 minutes to cover its entire intended area. If an overpass was constructed, that response time drops to just six minutes. Even more importantly, though, is upwards of 5,700 people could then be added to Station Eight's service area. So that's 5,700 additional people that could be reached in time from Fire Station Eight, meeting those industry standards. This map here of the general study area, the Norfolk Southern Railroad cuts diagonally through it. So that means streets both north-south and east-west are impacted by trains. You can see on the map the locations of the two fire stations that I just mentioned. There's also been the presence of public schools, obviously like one we're at here tonight. There's some other high pedestrian-generated locations like local parks. And then also of note, there are bridges of the Norfolk Southern Railroad in this area, Klein Avenue Expressway and on the Mormon. But of course, those being freeway facilities, they're only accessible at interchanges and not so convenient compared to using city streets. So this project has funding in by both the Federal Highway Administration and the State of Indiana. So therefore, there is a prescribed project development process that must be followed. The first begins with project selection, which really began when the city of Hammond was awarded funds by the State of Indiana for this project. After that, some early coordination activities occurred with various stakeholders, and I'll go over that here in just a second. We start the studies to establish that foundation, the purpose and need of the project, again, which is very strong on this project, the impacts the trains have on the community. We then create and study alternatives to address that purpose and need. And we screen those alternatives, comparing one to the other, to determine what we would call a preliminary preferred. And this is armed with environmental studies, surveys, and engineering analysis. I want to add that the preferred alternative is preliminary at this stage because of this process here. And it has to go through the hearing and public comment period and be responded to by the design team, all made public, before it's considered the official preferred. All of this needs to follow the federal regulations known as NEPA, which stands for National Environmental Policy Act. And NEPA requires that Endot study the impacts of a project like this on the environment, the cultural aspects, and how it affects quality of life for the community. Once those are done, then we begin the steps that really started here, start here tonight. And that is the official public hearing, where we'll gather comments and input on the project and address those comments. Once that's complete, we'll then finalize our environmental document, which will be made public at that stage. We'll communicate out the final preferred alternative. And at that point, land acquisition for needed right-of-way begins, final design permitting, and then ultimately, the project will go to bidding and construction. Along with a project development process, there also then is a public involvement process. That really began with that early coordination with key stakeholders that I mentioned. So that's reaching out to agencies at the federal, state, and local level to get an early understanding of what they may think about the project. So you see such agencies as the United States Army Corps of Engineers, Indiana Department of Environmental Management, various city managers, and local utilities. Although this is the first public hearing on this project, it's not the first public involvement activity. We've sent out mailers to people within the project area, letting them know that we would be on your property, doing various surveys, and who they could ask questions to. Although it was not an Endot event, the mayor has hosted Mayor's Nights Out regularly. And I know the past two in this particular council district have had a special focus on this project. The neighborhood survey that I mentioned. We also posted a notice when Federal Highway Administration concurred with our study that this project would have no adverse effect on historic artifacts. And then the outreach that we've done in anticipation of tonight. We've advertised a legal notice in the Northwest Indiana Times. We've mailed a legal notice to property owners in the area. And then we've also had some postings on social media, both Endot and the city, to help advertise for tonight. And then we've done some special outreaches that relates to Spanish speaking. Obviously, the interpreter's here this evening. The project handout is available in Spanish. And the legal notice also was published in Spanish. So at this point, we'll start talking about the alternatives that we studied as part of the project. For screening criteria, there could be some screening criteria that's legally required for any project. And then there's always the factors that are unique to a specific location. So for this, we screened out alternatives that relates to how they might impact or relocate businesses, people's homes, visual impacts, which can be important for a project that involves a new bridge, construction costs, the proximity and impacts to local schools and EMS, the traffic volumes that could be attracted by a new bridge, cemeteries, which is important on this one because there are cemeteries within the area of some of our alternatives, the removal of trees, the impact to wetlands, and then environmental justice impacts. This last one, the environmental justice, I think is worth extra consideration. Environmental justice is a federal law that requires, through the NEPA process, to assess how a project would impact communities with elevated minority or low-income populations. It's an important factor because all alternatives considered fall into that category. This portion of Hammond has an elevated population of minority. So what does that mean? That means all alternatives will have, will receive an extra level of scrutiny in terms of how they would require the relocation of businesses or homes, particularly those homes owned or rented by minorities, how a project might affect minorities' quality of life, and how the loss of environmental impacts might impact the environmental populations as well. These are the locations that we studied to provide, to address our purpose and need. In the northwest area of the study area would be railroad crossings in either Kennedy Avenue or 169th Street. In the central part of the study area would be a railroad crossing of Parrish Avenue. And in the southeast corner of the study area, railroad crossing at either Grand Avenue or 169th. So let's take a look at the two alternatives in the northwest study area, Kennedy Avenue or 169th Street. These are our two highest-traveled roads in the study area, as you can see. They also would be the most costly because these are both multi-lane facilities. I should add, you'll see that the construction dollars are in 2019 dollars. That's when the study was done. Obviously, all of these dollars have elevated since then, but they would have all elevated at the same magnitude. A Kennedy Avenue overpass, because it's amidst a commercial district, would have significant commercial impacts, with upwards of 21 businesses relocated by it. 169th Street similarly would have a total of 12 relocations, eight of which would be commercial businesses. And again, all of these would be located within that environmental justice area. These two locations are also the furthest from the public schools and have nearby St. Mary's and the township cemeteries that could be impacted as well. But like I said, they do have the highest traffic volumes. So in theory, they could service higher volumes than the other alternatives. Two considerations were made of Parrish Avenue, an overpass or an underpass. Parrish Avenue, as it pertains to traffic volumes, is kind of the middle of the road, a little on the low side compared to the other alternatives. A construction cost estimate for an overpass is kind of in the middle of the alternatives, as you're going to see. However, it would require upwards of 13 residential relocations. An underpass was also studied. It would have the same level of impacts in terms of the number of people being relocated. It's going to have a higher construction cost, though, because Parrish Avenue sits amidst an area with a very high water table. So a pumping system would have to be installed in order to address the stormwater. Also disadvantaged with really any underpass is the railroad will have to remain active during construction. So a temporary railroad bridge would have to be built so that railroad could continue operations during construction. Also, really, any project with a high water table could pose a long-term maintenance issue for the city. And then in the southeast portion of our study area, railroad overpass could be built in either 173rd Street or Grand Avenue. These are a little on the lower side in terms of traffic volumes, but they are also on the lower side in terms of construction cost estimates. When it pertains to residential relocations, they're also a little on the low side as well. However, two concerns with each of these is the nearby properties. The Greenbrier Apartments would be, would have a drive taken. It has two driveways today, and one of those two would be taken by either of these options. You know, one drive for such a large apartment complex not only would be a congestion issue for it, but also could hamper emergency response to the facility. Similarly, Grand Avenue would not only take away driveway Greenbrier Apartments, but also orchard acres, it would take away two of its three subdivision entrances. And that subdivision has over 50 homes in it. And then the last option would be a new terrain option through the wooded area between 173rd and 169th Street. As you can see, it's projected to have a traffic volume of about 5,600 cars per day. And at least in 2019, at that time, the cost estimate was about $11 million. You'll see we have found some cost savings since that 2019 study. The big benefit with this alternative is it only require two residential relocations, albeit both those two are still within an environmental justice community. At the moment, it shows has no impacts to wetlands. I'm going to discuss that topic over here in just a second. And it would require over 12 acres of tree removal. It does not impact any cemeteries, and it does not have any impacts to other access points similar to what I described with Greenbrier Apartments. Its construction cost estimate is middle of the pack when you compare to other alternatives. And it's middle of the pack in terms of its proximity to public schools. But it would be the only alternative with this magnitude of tree impact and would be the only alternative that impacts the Remnant Dune at the north end. So that is what has been determined, the preliminary preferred. I do want to emphasize again, it is preliminary because it is subject to the public hearing comments. To speak a little bit more details about it, we have some renderings of what it will look like. And there's also some of the same on the boards over there, if you haven't had a chance to look at them. At the bottom view, you can see that it will start at 172nd Street and go northward, and then it'll turn to the northeast to cross the railroad, and then curve back to the north, running behind some of the homes along Kansas Avenue. In the top left then is what the project will look like as it hooks into Parrish Avenue with the north end. Short connector road will be provided to 170th Street. And then in the top right then is the view at the south end of the project. A new intersection will be created. It's not going to need to be signalized, and the four-way stop with Parrish Avenue and 173rd would stay the same. The handouts also have this vision, because I know it's a little difficult to see right now. They're on the board. The road will have one lane in each direction. It will be curbed to collect stormwater. And there will be a shared-use path along the right side or the east side of it. So the shared-use path, shared-use path will be wide enough for not just pedestrians, but also bicyclists. And that way, it can connect into the on-street bike lanes, either that exist today or planned for the area. One of the downsides to a new train option is it will add over three acres of new pavement. So in order to mitigate for that, we have analyzed and designed six detention basins to collect that stormwater. The water will be held there and then released through a control pipe into the city's storm sewer system. The control pipe will limit the release to this 5.8 cubic feet per second. And that will empty into the 72-inch pipe that runs down Kentucky Avenue. So if you look in the bottom, the top right of the view, that puts in perspective just how little water 5.8 cubic feet per second is relative to the storm sewer. And even in a 100-year event, which is shown in the bottom right, it's still just 5% of its capacity. I think it also should be noted that the city has plans to make even more improvements to that trunk line down Kentucky by increasing the volume of its pumping station to the south, which will only improve performance. Also, this was a conservative analysis. We assumed no water would be infiltrated into the ground because of the high water table. That said, it's not high year-round, and there will be some infiltration into the ground because of the sandy soils. The construction sequencing for the new train option is actually very simple. Phase one would be the construction of the new terrain portion. This would include the roadway, the grading in the bridges, in the bridge. Very minimal impact to the traveling public during this time. Phase two would build the new intersection at the south end. 172nd Street can remain open during this time. I'm sorry, 173rd. I know I keep kind of getting that mixed up. 173rd Street would remain open during that time. And then phase three, you would build the north end of the project. At that point, during that phase, you would need to close Parrish Avenue and detour via Grand Avenue. The project does involve the permanent closure of two railroad crossings, Parrish Avenue and Arizona Avenue. So that means the crossing surface gates and bells would be removed. Guard rail would be placed across the roadway to prevent any illegal crossing by either pedestrians or vehicles. And special signage will be erected in that vicinity to alert drivers for the need to take alternate ways if they need to be through. You can see the construction cost estimates for the project. This is in 2023 dollars. You see there's costs in there for construction, the purchasing of the new right-of-way, and engineering and inspection. And all of this is listed in the handout. This project really does present a unique opportunity for the city of Hammond. In 2018, the State General Assembly passed a program called Local Trax, which allowed communities to petition Endot to receive funding to build railroad grade separations. And Hammond was one of 12 communities awarded. So Endot is paying 100% of all the design and inspection fees. And they're paying upwards of 78% for the land acquisition and 78% of the construction. In addition, Norfolk Southern, per Indiana statute, will be paying upwards of 5% of the project costs. And then, of course, the city of Hammond will be covering the rest. The preferred alternative has a lot of advantages, but it does have environmental impacts to it. A few features that won't be impacted would include wetlands and streams, floodways, historical properties, and noise increases. There will be a slight noise increase, but it is below the threshold that Federal Highway Administration considers significant. For that that is being impacted, we do have some strategies in order to provide some mitigation. The first regarding the tree removal and endangered species. The project was deemed by Federal Highway Administration and the United States Fish and Wildlife Service that it may affect the endangered Indiana bat, but not likely to adverse effect. And it may affect migratory birds. In order to mitigate that, tree removal would only be allowed in the winter months when birds are not nesting and bats are hibernating. There'll be about 13 acres of disturbed land, about 12 of which is tree removal. So Endot and the city of Hammond are funding a mitigation program with a local agency, about $230,000 to plant 24 acres of trees, mostly within the city of Hammond. There's also an additional consideration of the project of planting trees along the right-of-way line to provide visual screening of the roadway and the railroad. As I mentioned, this alternative does involve the relocation of two residences. And the city of Hammond does have a program to provide additional compensation if those people would want to relocate in the city of Hammond. Of course, they do not have to though. The study that we, my ecologist, developed and was reviewed and approved by Endot determined that there are no jurisdictional wetlands impacted by this project. And by jurisdictional, I mean that the United States Army Corps of Engineers and the Indiana Department of Environmental Management have custody of those. It's a process that requires not just ground that's wet, but also soils and ecology that meet certain criteria. That said, there have been some people that raise concerns that maybe there are areas that have been missed. And Indiana Department of Environmental Management has reached out to us and asked us to reinvestigate a few of those areas. And so we will be doing that next month. We will be publishing the results of that study on the project website for everybody to see and obviously reassess any alternatives as needed. And then lastly, is that environmental justice that I mentioned, the impacts that the project has to low-income or minority populations. I say with special emphasis, of course, everybody's comments are important, but anybody that is minority, that lives, could be impacted by this project is strongly encouraged to enter a comment about how this preferred alternative could impact you, whether for the good or the bad. So the project schedule, we're hoping to finalize our environmental document here later this summer. We will then start the right-of-way acquisition process in the fall and expect to go to letting or start construction next March. The project will require all construction seasons of 2024 and 2025, with the project then wrapping up in the spring of '26. So now let's talk a little bit about how you can be involved in the comment process. Obviously, attendance here tonight is one of the best. As you can see, we are streaming live currently this presentation, and we are video recording it. And that video recording will be made available on the project website, so especially helpful for those that aren't here tonight. Visiting the project website, and the link to that is on the handout. And then we also have project resource locations, and I'll quickly discuss what those are. In order to submit comments for the design team, you can either do so here in person tonight or fill out a comment form during the comment period. And I should say that the design team is required to respond to any official comment, although that will not be done tonight. That would be done in the coming days and weeks and published in the environmental document. The project website, it's hosted off of Endot La Porte District's website. Boards, reports, all the information you see here tonight, the comment forms will all be available on that website. It's a lot of the information already is too. We have what we call project resource locations. So these are great if perhaps your Wi-Fi is down, or maybe you don't have the speeds to go to accommodate some of the documents. At Hammond City Hall, the City Engineers Office, the Gene Shepherd Community Center, and the library at Purdue Northwest has a lot of these same materials, including the comment forms. And they will keep those until the comment period expires later next month. So there's two ways to enter comments in for the record. The first is to fill out the comment form, which are available right here, and then you can put them in the box. You could also hand them to any one of the team members. After tonight, you are encouraged to either take some copies home or you could download off the website. And that comment form can either be emailed or mailed to me, and all that information is on the comment form itself. Again, any comment received within the time period will be published in the environmental document and responded to. The second way is unique to tonight. You are welcome to come up here to the microphone and enter your comment. We have recording devices, so we will be recording you both audio and a video for a backup. you both, um, audio and a video for a backup. Um, and then we will transcribe that comment and publish in the environmental document. It's important to note that that comment that you have here tonight will not be responded to this evening because the design team will need time to deliberate what your comment is and then publish that in the environmental document. If you have questions, the best way to do that would be after the presentation and find one of the team members. So with that said, we will now start the com, the public comment session. Just a couple other things. We do have a specific sign and sheet for those that want to, um, come up to the microphone. If you change your mind and haven't entered your name in it, that's fine. We just ask that you still go ahead and enter your name, maybe right out, right before you come up. Uh, out of respect for everybody's time, I ask that you keep your comment three minutes or less. We do have a timer. Um, but if, if I'll give you maybe a little symbol, uh, this sign, if you could just maybe try to kind of wrap it up when you get near that three-minute mark. Before you begin, if you can remember, please state your name, um, slowly and clearly because again, your name will be published with your comment in the environmental document. And lastly, I wanted to mention, of course, that you are being recorded as part of it so we can have it for the record. So with that, we will start the process. We will call off the first three people listed. Um, if you don't mind, maybe, uh, maybe you can kind of stand over here and then we'll kind of keep, keep calling people up, keeping two people at a time just to keep the process moving. Um, and don't be afraid to talk into the microphone. Um, again, um, if, if speaking up here is not your favorite thing, then just, uh, I encourage you then to use the comment form. Uh, verbal comments and written comments are not judged any differently.
Great. So our first three here are K O Edwards, Andrew McKeeman, uh, and Ken Rosick, if you can come up and queue.
Good evening. My name is Kenny Edwards. Uh, I'm the state legislative director for Smart Transportation and we're the labor union that represents the men and women that operate these trains that, um, unfortunately too often block your streets. And I'm here to say that, um, first of all, that, uh, we come from, I came here from Lafayette, Indiana tonight. Uh, most of the men and women that operate these trains come from Elkhart and Fort Wayne. And we have great respect for your community. Um, and I want everybody in this room to know that we do never intentionally block your crossings. We're just, we just are told what to do and we operate the trains accordingly. Uh, we're not the ones that decide how long the trains are, um, and how far back they go. Now, today we were able to, initially read the ProPublica article and see the shocking images in there. And then we came, my team and I came and we saw with our own eyes, uh, just on the day that we showed up. So, um, I just, we just want to say that, um, there are things that you can do as a community. You can demand that this doesn't have to continue. There are things that the railroad can do to eliminate this problem of blocked crossings. And the number one thing is to reduce the length of, of the trains. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna end it with that out of respect for the other, uh, people that want to talk, but I'm gonna hang around afterwards. And if anybody wants any, uh, further, uh, wants to ask questions or any further clarification, I'll be glad to talk to you. Thank you so much. God bless you all.
So now we'll have, um, Ken Rosick and if, um, Mark Gordish and Catherine Perrin can come up to queue up.
Hi, everybody. One thing that was never mentioned, uh, in the report that was given was, uh, the issue that the gentleman just brought up, which was kids having to hop the trains or crawl under the trains. And this project does not solve that problem. All residents wanted it's a solution for the children to get to and from school safely. We wanted the best solution, not the worst solution possible. This is no solution at all. This is what happens when community is left completely out of the decision-making progress and it was. Three public schools are on Morton, Scott and Hess Elementary are on Grand Avenue. All hazards and incidents listed in the application, the grant application, were located at the Grand Avenue Crossing, not on Parish Avenue. We're talking about kids having to hop trains or the accident that they reported to the Indiana Department of Transportation as a reason why for this bridge. They happened at Grand Crossing. We need an underpass at Grand Crossing. For years, our local officials assured us that this was, that this bridge would solve the issues of kids walking to and from school. Now we see that, what the reality is. The number one justification for the tracks application has been completely ignored. The number one justification for the project was ignored. You'll notice if you look at the maps too, they have cropped out the area where the road was supposed to go to service the kids. It's a two and a half mile walk, it's, excuse me, two-mile walk from Scott Middle School right here to the other side of the tracks using the city's bridge. The United States Secretary of Transportation, Pete Buttigieg, posted, uh, this, on this issue just, uh, two days ago. He stated, "It's unacceptable that someone would have to climb under or around a standing train to get to their destination. Closing crossings will make our town more car-dependent and less pedestrian-friendly, which is the exact opposite of contemporary urban design." An underpass solves this problem. All of the collateral damage that is going to result from this, the destruction of the High Tolston Dunes, 4,700-year-old dunes, hundreds of trees. We have barred owls, we have red-tailed hawks, nesting red-tailed hawks. We have thousands of migrating birds that come through that area and they visit our backyards every day. As soon as construction starts, they will vanish and never to return. This is a heavy industrialized area and we are in an, uh, environmental justice area. What that means is we have a lot of pollution around us and we have a lot of people that are affected by it, expressways surrounding us. I think you need to keep every little stretch of natural space that exists to balance out the environment that we live in. Um, I could go on and on, but I'll do it in, in, in submission and public comment. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mark Gordish. I'm a Hessville resident, 57 years. So I'm still here. Bought my house on the south side of tracks because I couldn't get to the original school in Hessville. So my kids went to Our Lady of Grace. Obviously, living in this area, I do work for the city engineering department. I see the daily train blockages. So this is going to increase public safety for everybody on north, or south side of tracks. North side doesn't have to worry about that. So, one day, years, a couple, two years ago, a neighbor crossed the street. He had an ambulance, elderly gentleman. So I figured I'd go out there and see what's going on. It was about 10:30 at night. He was in pain. They were assessing him and he asked me to go with him in ambulance. His, the family was out of town. So I went with him. They looked at Parish was blocked. They looked at Kennedy was blocked. Had to go Kennedy all the way to the Borman, all the way to Klein Avenue to St. Catherine's. And people do not stop for ambulance. Trust me. It shocked me. I was amazed, but it took more time to get around that. So if, if, one of the issues I have too, since we live on a south side of tracks, St. Margaret's is closed. If that was still open, and administration fought for that, if that was still open, they wouldn't have to cross the tracks to go there. Now, he did not go to community, but he wanted to. It was on bypass. So that was an issue. Now, I understand, and I've been working for the city for 32 years, and I understand the issue with the trees and so forth and everything else. Uh, overpass is the way to go. A underpass will be 17 feet into the ground. It will be into the water table and we pump it into the sewer every minute of the day for the entire year. That's the issue with the underpass in this area. And that sewer, it would go into during the major floods, Donley Park got flooded, the north side. My area got flooded because that sewer was not able to handle that much water. And we will be putting that much water on a 24-hour basis in that sewer. Instead of an overpass, which has ponds and it will fill up, release when it can release, it's able to be released. So I support this. And one other thing, living in the area, everybody hears these trains. They don't like to, some of the houses are right next to it on, on Parish. And the horns are obnoxious. So those two crossings that are going to be closed will not have horns. So I support it. Thank you much.
This is for taller people. Hi, my name is Catherine Perrin. I live in Highland, Indiana, actually right on the other side of the expressway, just a few blocks from the Little Calumet River. And I have documents. Should I give them to you or should I submit them electronically? Okay, I have a, an email from Emily Stork at the Department of Natural Resources, Indiana, with her, um, assessment of, um, of the Briar East Woods. I have a letter from Jim Sweeney of the Isaac Walton League and the Friends of the Canca Key. I have a, uh, letter from the Gibson Woods Wild Ones president. I have, uh, an email from Kenneth Shune talking about the historical significance of this area. And I have over 500 signatures that we have collected from residents who oppose this project. This is about keep, and, and you know what? If the only way we could keep kids safe was to cut down all the trees, that would be okay. But there's a better way to do it. An underpass will solve the problem without letting us, um, lose this habitat, without letting us lose the trees and the birds and the pollinators and the bats. And I still have not seen an actual assessment of the Briar East Woods of what, what you guys think is over there. So I'm really interested in finding out what is there and we can do better. We can do better for the kids. We can do better for the trees. We can do better for the, all, all the habitat by doing an underpass rather than this bridge that, that is, is really way too big. Thank you.
So after Connie, we'll have TJ Gerdig, trustee Blake King, and Mary Brown.
Hello, I'm Connie Wachala. I live in Highland, uh, just down Kennedy Avenue. Um, you spoke of the negative impact of trains on the community. Um, please also consider the positive impact of the woods. It provides food and nesting places for the animals, birds. It sequesters carbon, the loss of which will not be mitigated by saplings, um, for a long, long time at least. Uh, it reduces the, uh, noise pollution from the expressway. And then there is the positive impact of having 30 acres plus of wo, of wooded area in that neighborhood. Environmental justice is important. Northlake County has for too long been the recipient of decisions that don't take into consideration the people's needs. The trains are a problem. Let's find a solution, perhaps an underpass, um, forcing the train companies to cut their train, the lengths of the trains is another one. That meets the needs of our entire community. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is TJ Gerdig. Um, the, the proposed bridge project is a perfect example of the pattern of reckless development that is now commonplace in Hammond. The city achieved funding for this project citing the terrible problem of children risking their lives climbing trains just to walk to school. The city has since admitted the bridge project does nothing to solve that. The bridge project destroys 4,000-year-old dunes, um, uh, which is a wooden, a wooded wetland that is cherished by the community and is one of the last remnants of this area's natural heritage. We were told at a mayor's night out that if we wanted to live in nature, we shouldn't live in a city. The city experienced catastrophic flooding only a couple of years ago due to an exhausted and already overwhelmed sewage system. They now plan to destroy one of the best ways to get rainwater into the ground and replace it with pavement. The administration is dismissive and sometimes hostile to critics and plans to proceed despite the community being against it. Ken Rosick has proposed an underpass alternative that would better serve the school kids, emergency vehicles, and the community's access to natural recreation areas. You guys listed the three needs that were wanting to be addressed by this project were, number one, kids crossing. The kids will still hop the trains. The kids are still going to hop the trains if they have to walk an extra two miles to get to school. The school's right there. I, this does nothing for that. And so if, I mean, if you guys want to say that's one of your needs addressed by that, you can, but it's not. Number two was trains blocking numerous crossings. Well, this project closes two crossings and trains will still block the third crossing. So this also does nothing to solve your second need. And your third need was EMS vehicle response times, which once again, you're closing two crossings. So 90% of the time, when there are no parked trains, this will hinder EMS vehicles from getting to where they need to be and will possibly cost lives. An underpass will give them clear passage, reliable passage. This project must be stopped. It is against our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Carolina Blake King. I live at Tenor Four Highland Street, the third district, City of Hammond. The first thing I tend to disagree with is that the project area was the only area that was surveyed. Even though I live in the third district, it affects me as well. It affects our children as well. Because there is open enrollment. We have children in the third district and other districts going to Morton and to some of the other high schools. And their parents have to drive them. If not, they have to walk. So in that regard, the survey should have been citywide because it affects every citizen in the City of Hammond. Secondly, let me give my little background. I served as Hammond Redevelopment Commissioner for thirteen years. I was employed with the Calumet Project, which is, which is an environmental, social justice organization. And in that, we surveyed and we worked throughout this city with the Amoco and various other agencies. So their social justice would prevail. Is it prevailing now? That's the question. All my adult life, children has been my advocacy. Children and the desert franchise. Anybody knows me. When it comes to these babies, I'm all about children. I have witnessed and seen the horrendous photos and actually our students crossing underneath these trains and over these trains. And it just breaks my heart. So I'm looking for a plan that is inclusive, that will take through everything. Not a piecemeal plan. We need a plan that's going to work. It's too much money involved. And even in this printout, I would like to have seen more, more regard to our children because that's who it impacts the most. The death of a child. The loss of limb of a child. I happen to serve on the school board, City of Hammond. So that's my job. That's my business to protect my children. And I will go to any length, regardless to who or what. Because these are my children. If, after this meeting, I have photos and videos that you can see, and I will share them with you, of our babies climbing underneath these trains. And just the thought, if that train would move a milli- inch, that child could lose life or limb. So I'm just looking for the best plan. Underpass, overpass, whatever. But it has to be the best plan. And I want to see just as much information on both. So as a citizen, I can then make the best decision that will affect my children. Thank you very much.
Mary Brown.
Hi, my name's Mary Brown. I've lived in Hammond for about twenty-three years. Wasn't prepared to do this, by the way. My concern, I never thought I'd be a tree hugger, but you're going to cut down an awful lot of trees. Now, I live on One Hundred and Seventy-third Street. My property is impacted by the bridge, by part of the construction. The noise from the expressway, you can hear in my yard. You cut down the trees, I'm going to hear the train on the other side. No one's ever talked about a sound barrier. You're going to plant hundreds and thousands of trees. They're going to be little bitty trees. And I'm going to be dead before they sound barrier anything. I just think that it is an environmental problem. I do understand that the bridge, the train crossings, I live through it every single day. I'm wondering about a staircase over the tracks on One Hundred and Seventy-third Street that the kids could walk up and over a train. Seems like an easy thing. Your handicapped accessibility. Those kids are usually on a bus, in a car, being driven by a patient, or a parent, to and from school or a bus system of some sort. It's the kids that walk, that climb, that climb over the train, climb under the train and are impacted. Now, maybe you still need your bridge, mayor, but a ladder over the train, the kids could go. Because I agree, I was a kid. I walked to school. I wouldn't walk two miles out of my way just so I didn't have to climb over a train, thinking for thirty-five seconds, I'm okay, I'll do this. That's my thought.
Our next three will be Scott Rakos, Dana Heltz, and Anne Sedlasik.
Hello, I'm Scott Rakos. I'm the sixth district councilman for this area and a retired firefighter. Been a lifelong resident, pretty much, of Hessville. Ever since I was a kid, what we knew in Hessville was trains. In the seventies, there was a group that used to play our high school dances called Train City Blues. That's how long our problem's been with Hessville. I really appreciate the fact that the state and INDOT has done a, paid for a very extensive plan. You gave us alternatives. You looked at what the alternatives were. You looked at what the best situation for us would be. You gave us lowest amount of residential relocation. We only have two. On any other plan, it would be much worse. And I, as a councilman, I appreciate that. The median part, construction plans and proximity to schools. I mean, I just, I'm very impressed with what you did. I don't know what, it seems like for such a long time, misinformation has been passed and taken as fact while you guys were actually doing the work. The, a big part of this area, we've seen in pictures from many years ago, part of it was farmland. The dune that they keep talking about was actually, most of that dune was Briar East and now it's Kennedy Crossing. When that project went in, that took away most of that dune they keep talking about, this forty-seven year old dune. Most of it was taken during that time. It's proven to me that the alternatives are more costly, adversely affect residents, and negatively impact our sewer system. To match the congestion reducing, you know, in two thousand and eighteen, I was approached by Dean, and he says, we got an opportunity to do something about trains in Hessville. And I said, but we need some funding for the application process to the state. I said, count me in, it was the first thing I wanted to do. I've been a councilman for almost eight years. Back then, it was four, it was four years. In two thousand and nineteen, I ran on this bridge project because Hessville has a problem with trains. Hessville has a problem with trains. And again, thank you. I mean, I've worked with this Student Conservation Association Community Program. They've already done many tree plantings. They work real well at the city. They've done many areas in Hessville and throughout the city. I appreciate the fact that I like trees too. I want, I want trees replaced. It's just, again, I want to thank you for the work you've done. And I'm sorry people don't want to listen to all the work that you did. Thank you.
Hi, everyone, my name is Dana Heltz. I live just down the street over there. I just want to say, I walk this street just about every day for my health, as you can see. I've lived here since zero five. And I got a couple of questions regarding these trains. And I know, by the way, I appreciate everybody in the city. Engineers, mayor, everyone trying to resolve this problem. I know at one time, we were trying to tick it and, you know, get some clients. I guess that didn't work out so well. But I got a couple of questions. One regarding the response time with the EMS. Now, I know that they said it takes twenty minutes to get down to this area. I'd like to know, number one, does it matter what street we come off? Do we go off of Grand or we come off of Parish? Most of your houses are back in here. So they're still coming from Firehouse Eight. They would still have to come down either street. Would it be better for them to come down Grand with an underpass or go over, overpass by Parish? Because you also got to remember, we get snow, ice, things like that. That underpass and the overpass would have to be maintained well. Make sure happy keeps going. But there's another question I have that I don't think anybody's taken a look at. What if we just rerouted the trains? Okay, and I say that, and I know it sounds crazy, but every day I walk down here and I stop at this train track here. And I come up and I see that there seems to be a ratio for every train that's coming through here. There's three going down, up and down that track up there. So why are we rerouting and just abandoning these tracks here? So, you know, then my other question is, is, and my observation is, the trains run through quick from going from west to east. They're always stopping going to east, east to west. What is going on down there that's bringing up the traffic here? So, those are my questions. I thank you very much, you all, have a good evening.
Good evening, my name is Anne Sedlasik. And I just wanted to come up. I am opposed to the proposed Governor's Crossway overpass project. I believe that an underpass at the Grand Avenue Crossing is a superior alternative to all the problems that the proposed bridge project claims to solve. As we've heard, the primary reason that the City of Hammond cited in its application for funding for this project was to improve public safety for children and pedestrians as the parked trains lead to children climbing over or crawling under parked trains on the way to school. But unfortunately, the overpass fails to provide safe passage for children on their commute to school. They will still encounter the parked trains. And the current bridge plan will reroute them in the opposite direction of the schools, taking them up to two miles out of their way to get to the other side of the tracks. And I personally wouldn't want to walk those two miles. I would be tempted to cross the train as well. So not only does it fail to solve this major public safety issue, it also closes two existing railroad crossings and adds more car-centric infrastructure, which will impact emergency response times and I think will also introduce more traffic problems that the bridge also claims to solve. So, on top of that, the bridge will demolish the ancient Briar East dunes, which are historic forty-seven hundred year old geological marvel in our heavily industrialized area. And once it's gone, it's gone forever. There's no replacing that kind of established natural area and habitat, even with planting trees or other mitigation efforts. And I don't think there's any way to make up the complex ecosystem that exists here by doing that. So not only is this natural area a respite for neighbors in this heavily developed area, it also plays a major role in mitigating flooding and noise pollution from the surrounding industry, expressways. And it serves as a habitat to over a thousand native trees and dozens of wildlife species. So, the project does not address the main issues it claims to solve. Safe passage for schoolchildren, emergency vehicle improved response time. And on top of that, it destroys an ancient geological treasure that we have in the City of Hammond. So I think that an underpass will service the needs of the entire community and preserve our woods in the heart of Hessville. Thank you.
Okay, our next three will be Carolyn Marsh, Joey Hines, and Linda Anguiano.
Carolyn Marsh, I'm a longtime member of Audubon Society, over three years. I've been involved in a lot of bird conservation efforts throughout the northern part of Lake County, Highland, Wrigley, the Hammond Bird Sanctuary, George Lake, Wolf Lake. It is my experience that Hammond doesn't do a good job of replacing trees. I read the, I scanned the report and it says that the trees may be replaced on site. That would be the Hessville community. But that's not guaranteed. Also involved is the Student Conservation Association. They have a committee, committee tree program, community tree program. That is not a community-based tree program. It's run by NERCSE, Northwest Indiana Regional Planting Committee. So what I'm concerned about is that there is absolutely no control by the community of trees that would be replaced. And I know the record of Hammond on trees for having these tremendous problems around George Lake, Wolf Lake, and at the Bird Sanctuary. I was told by the City of Hammond Port Authority, who manages it, to stop volunteering there. And I had bird feeders and bird baths. And I managed and cut trees. I was in there whacking away, keeping trail under control. And I was told by the Hammond Port Authority with their lawyer, the Hammond Park Foundation, to stop volunteering and to stop working there. This was five years ago. And the Hammond Bird Sanctuary is in total just, you know, it's not managed for the birds. So I'm really worried about, what are they talking about, tree replacement? They've got a money value on it. They say how many acres will be replanted. They will have to double the number that they take down. But there's no community involvement in this. If there's no community involvement in this, we have to vote this down. Because this is what we need. We need a voice. We need the people who live here, who want and desire trees to prevent noise, to prevent air pollution, and to have a nice green environment. So we need community involvement. And this plan, as I just scanned it, does not provide that. So I'm for community control of this area.
Hello, my name is Joey Hines. I live in Robertsdale. My family has lived in Hammond for three generations. My grandfather worked as a lineman in the Gibson Train Yard. He used to tell us a story of how he would go to the train yard as a kid and would pick up coal that fell off the cars to heat their home. Some trains, or some trainsmen even would throw a piece of coal out and to him and his brothers. He worked following for the train yard for twenty years at Gibson Woods. And he always said that they provided for him. But during his time there at Gibson Woods, he learned to appreciate nature that was surrounding him. And he was part of the original group that worked to save the woods. Today, I am here, I moved to Hammond three years ago for other reasons entirely. But I have come to work in a lot of these areas, the natural areas in Lake County and Porter County, as well as Illinois and Michigan, all over the place. And I see how we are losing so much species that are around us. And I see it happening every day, more and more. There's nothing There's nothing we can do besides fight the development for these natural spaces. Or they're gonna be gone forever. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Linda Anguiano and I have spoken dozens, maybe even 100 times at city council, but this is different. I'm nervous. I wanna say I'm grateful for this meeting. Our mayor told us there already was a public vetting. There was no public meeting with feedback from the community. So I'm very grateful for this. If it hadn't been for the dune dusters, which Ken Rosick started, meeting with Item and Item contacting the Department of Transportation, the Indiana Department of Transportation, we might not even have this meeting because our mayor has said, "It's done. There's no compromise. There's no more conversations." If you had come to the city council meetings or the mayor nights out, you would have heard our mayor, Tom McDermott, constantly change what he had said the previous time about the housing, the residential project going up there. Yeah, he's smiling at me. He just loves me. I have read and reread this application. This is what was submitted. And it keeps talking about a rail overpass. To me, that sounds like the train is going over. Not the traffic is going over, but the train is going over. I have seen a very successful underpass. It's in the same area. It's in Munster. And it has sidewalk that has a gate so that the kids or any of the adults who are walking have no problem. What their water table is so significantly different just a few miles away? Come on. I read in this application that alternatives were briefly, 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 can't even remember the word, it made me so mad, considered. They were briefly considered. I don't think that an underpass has ever been seriously considered. And I am sick and tired of members of this city council, not all of them, and this mayor being so arrogant and yelling at us and putting us down and saying, "You have no voice. There is no second chance. There is no alternative." Smiling, smiling, so arrogant. Okay, response from this community? Okay, Mr. Bott, I wanna tell you, Hammond has a population, the last recorded one, 76,984. Hessville has a population, 23,690. How many postcards went out? 5,000. 5,000. Our house, my dad didn't even tell me and mom that this postcard came in. He, just a little macho man, he filled it out and mailed it. Other homes got six copies with one adult there. Okay, so out of these 5,000 postcards, which were written in slanted language, I would have said, "Oh yeah, I want a bridge." Only 540 replies. 540 replies. And like our wonderful, beautiful school board representative, who's a good friend of mine, I can't remember her name at this moment. This affects all of Hammond. People pass through. They like shopping. They like our little Mexican panaderia. They like our restaurants. This affects all of Hammond, not just those 5,000. And I also wanna ask a question about this residential development. This is where the mayor has swayed back and forth. "Oh, it's not a big thing." "Oh, it is a big thing." What's right there in the application? Who is this residential development going to benefit? Is it gonna be the same people who are living right off of Parish in that neighborhood? Where it's the city workers and the city cops? Who else is gonna afford that? Who else is gonna get the, you know, little nudge? Okay, put in your application. All right, the last thing I'm gonna talk about is environmental devastation. This property right here held my favorite tree. I grew up right across the street. My girlfriend and I came over here, oh, three minutes, and we jumped on the trees and climbed the trees. And my favorite tree was here. It was cut down for Scott Middle. There were acres and acres and acres of land there for Morton. Okay, but these are important developments, schools for kids. But the noise level went way up and we've got Klein and we've got 8094. And if you read any of the articles in the paper, we've got more and more traffic each summer. And not only is that noise pollution, it's throwing out all those diesel fumes. Who and what is gonna absorb that? Our bodies, our children, our plants. What kind of gardens are we gonna have? We're not gonna even be able to have organic gardens with all this pollution. So I've tried to be succinct. Those who know me probably congratulate me. But I think that this residential development is what's behind it. And nobody's concerned about the noise absorption, the clean air, the animals, or these remnants of the Tolston Dunes, which are estimated to be 4,900 years old. And we have had biologists and all kinds of specialists after specialists come out and talk about the unique benefits. Just like our National Dunes Park has the most unique diversity in the whole country, so does our dunes. So thank you.
I have Cindy Murphy, Levita Sparks Wade, and Brian Poland next.
First, I'd like to thank Indot for hosting this meeting tonight, and I will try not to blow anybody's eardrums out. The first thing I wanna say, I heard about the videos, the kids, and I wanna say, "How dare you?" Do not take videos of our kids going under these trains. You get out of your cars, you call 911, and you tell those kids to stop. I was in a mayor's night out here at Scott Middle School several years ago, and we talked about the trains. And the foreign police chief gave the poignant story of how he was young and his best friend decided to climb over the trains and he died. Do not ever start videotaping our kids. You need to get out of your car. So that's my digression, public service announcement. That is what we need to be doing here, is stopping these kids from doing this, get the adults involved. So someone's talking about how many kids this is gonna impact. And yes, we have all these crossings. There's approximately, oh, by the way, you have two school board members here tonight. So I'm Cindy Murphy, I'm on the Hammond School Board. I live right here in Hessville. My kids went to Morton High School. They went to Scott Middle and they went to Harding. So for me, my kids didn't have to worry about the trains because we were on the right side of the tracks. But if I wanna go to work several times a week, I'm stopped by the trains, going to the grocery store, the whole bit. This project impacts me and I'm definitely for it. I have to disagree. I went to a lot of meetings before this. I gave input about making sure there was a pedestrian crossing for the students. And so you wanna say, "Oh, one crossing can't..." So how do you weigh that? So a bunch of students are now positively impacted. They have a way to get around the train. We cannot, Indot, and Hammond doesn't have the money to do every single crossing here in Hammond. They had to pick. And we listened to him, how they went through all the crossings and methodically and scientifically made the decision to do it here. That's one of my T-shirts, "Less fiction, more science." That's what Indot did here. They came out and said, "This is the best place because we studied it." So how do we weigh this? So when my kids were here at Scott Middle School, I have five of them, I was on the Science Olympia team coaching and we made many trips out to the dunes to help out our kids. We met with the naturalists. And there we learned about the unique ecosystems right here in Northwest Indiana. Doom, Fordune, Eastern Desiduous Forest, the oak savanna and the wetlands. And one of the things that the naturalists taught us out there is poor quality and unmanaged versus the managed that they do over there. My kids actually got to go out. So phragmides ostralis is a really bad problem over here. It's an exotic invasive. It pushes out the cattails. The dunes over there, they killed several acres of it. Our students from Scott Middle School got to go out there and plot cat, cat nine tails in there, helping restore the environment. And so this is a big win for everybody. It helps the students. I know it's not all of them. It's gonna help EMS. How do you put a price on someone whose EMS gets there 10 minutes later and they've already died of a heart attack? What price do you put on a child's life that die because their prefrontal cortexes aren't developed yet and they think it's a bright idea to go crawl over under a train? What price is that child's life? What price is the quality of life? So I'm not stopped by a train and maybe I get to go to the grocery store, which is nine blocks away, but sometimes it's a 10-minute trip just to get there because I'm stopped by a train. What can we do to make this project better? I really wish you had this farther out so I could point out at this. Again, going back to the environmental assignment, look at Gibson Woods. This is a high-quality, well-managed area. Again, with Harding has the thing with Gibson Woods and we learned a lot about that. Several years ago, Gibson Woods said, "You know what? We're gonna bring it back 200 years." And everybody's complaining about cutting trees. I was devastated. They took down everything but the oaks. If it didn't belong in an oak savanna, it was gone. They did all these prescribed burns. I, okay. That's what this project needs to be over here. I am suggesting you cut down every single tree that's not belonging to an oak savanna. I'm suggesting you put in prairie instead, no mowing, with wonderful plants, colors, and rain gardens and not detention ponds. Why? Phragmides loves detention ponds. And I will go write a bunch of these comments up and thank you very much for having us tonight.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Levita Sparks Wade and I, in full disclosure, I am originally born and raised in Gary, Indiana. And I moved here two years ago. And I run the nonprofit organization for the city of Hammond called United Neighborhoods. And even prior to my moving here, when I was coming from Gary and coming to see my friends over in Hammond, I got stopped by the train on Kennedy. And so when I moved in the area, I live in Kennedy Crossing Apartments. Every single day, I'm stopped by a train, either morning, noon, or night. I bowl, I'm an avid bowler, any bowlers in the house. I bowl at both Plaza and Olympia. And on Monday nights, I wanna stop by either Burger King or McDonald's on Kennedy. And no sooner than, this was just this past Monday, I stopped by Burger King, bought me and my son a couple burgers, and no sooner than I'm coming out of the driveway, there's a train. And it's 9:30 at night, so those 10 minutes, my fries getting cold, all of that, that happens. So sometimes I would just go back down Kennedy, come up the highway and come around to Klein to get back home. Because sometimes the train is going really, really slow, sometimes it completely stops. Now, this is the thing that about Hammond because there are so many amenities here that people who have been here for a very long time may not even appreciate anymore or may take for granted. But if the biggest problem that Hessville has is deciding between birds, trees and trains, you have, you are light years away from the problems that the city of Gary is experiencing right now. And I think most people here would agree with me. I got the survey. I was so happy to see that survey. I filled that survey out and I hand-delivered it to City Hall because there were no, I was so happy to be close to a Kentucky Fried Chicken. I was happy to be close to a bowling alley. I was happy to be close to all of these things that other folk, once again, take for granted. And the last thing that I wanna say is that we cannot solve every single problem with one solution. But this solution solves my problem in gas and in time. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Brian Poland. In the words of Levita, "Full disclosure, I'm the director of city planning." As a planner, I appreciate the process that Indot, that Indot has gone through, the whole NEPA process, as well as the public input. For those of you who don't know, the NEPA process is very arduous, very thorough, going through all of the evaluations that are set under the law. The fact that this is a part, also includes part of the public process, I'm very happy to see all the number of people in this audience who are here to listen, to hear, and to express their opinions about what this project means to them. As a 34-year resident of Hammond, and that includes about 20 years of me living in Woodmore, and more importantly, when I was living in Woodmore, I would come in and out of Hessville, that I have also experienced on a personal level, the delays caused by the trains, as many of you here have also done so. We all know how aggravating and annoying it is to be delayed or stopped by the trains. In wearing both the hats I have, as my professional opinions, as well as my personal opinions, I really truly believe that this project is important. It will help relieve the problems that do result from these delays, from the stopped slow trains. And as has already been expressed by others better than me, this will help improve the public safety and emergency response times. And I think it's very important that we consider that and keep that in our minds, that first responders are very important and as quickly as they get to us, the better. Thank you.
I have Alberto Ochoa, Celeste Bowles, and Tom McDermott.
Good afternoon. My name is Alberto Ochoa. Have been living here in the area of Hessville since about 2005. And yes, trains are a problem. And they've been a headache for me since day one. I, when I grew up in Chicago, my mom lives down the street from the train as well. And the thing that I've been hearing here from everybody is, that's the problem with the train. I think by the time we come to an agreement between should be overpass and underpass, I think everybody here should write a letter to our legislators down state and let them know what we're doing here because we need to either make the train shorter or cite the trains. We have something now to try to slow it down until we come to an agreement or until this comes built. Because when you guys talk about that tragic accident on Grand, that was my friend that died there. And I saw that when I was out of town, it ruined my vacation. That was somebody that used to come in my house and she was such a young, she had, she was so young and full of life. And when you guys bring her name up, it kind of upsets me that people would use her name. But the only thing that I ask, whether it's an overpass But the only thing that I ask, whether it's an overpass or whatever it is, if we can do it as a memory for her. Do, and we come to an agreement and do it, like I said, for the children and the lives. Because her life was lost. And we do not, cannot afford to have any more lives lost. So please, don't bash certain people here because we're all dealing with the same problem. Be mad at the trains. And let's work together and get a solution by working together and not bash each other. Please, because all it's gonna do is make this longer. So please, for the children's sake and my friends' sake that I love, please, let's work together and let's get this through. And let's write the legislators. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Celeste Bowles. I live on 173rd Street. I want to thank Endot for being here and taking our comments tonight. Since I'm on 173rd on a rental property north of the tracks and have many, many friends in that neighborhood, I do find myself inconvenienced at Parrish from time to time by the train crossing. Closing Parrish will not solve my problem personally. But in terms of the problem we're facing as a community, trying to solve the train problem in Hesville by tearing down all of Briar Woods and building this bridge is like trying to get rid of your mouse problem in your house by burning down the house. You know, it's not gonna solve the problem that you addressed. And you're gonna lose something priceless in the process. The environmental services, meaning like benefits to human health provided by trees that are, you know, up to 300 years old, cannot be replaced with even double that number of saplings. We know that, right? It will take 100 years for one of those saplings to be big enough to be absorbing the pollution. Look, I love it here in Hammond. We have a good economy. We have a good balance, right? Between our parks and beautiful things and industry that keeps a lot of people employed. But when side-effecting that industry is that it does pollute and the trees are helping us deal with that. The trees are helping Gary deal with that because pollution goes everywhere. So it is also an environmental justice issue. So I really think that we don't need to tear down all the trees and build 68 houses and two apartment complexes to deal with our train problem here in Hammond. I really appreciate that John Lynn came from Lafayette to speak about alternatives, like making the trains shorter. We've got to find solutions together that do not destroy something priceless in the process. And I do agree actually with the school board member Murphy, who spoke and said, "There's too much tree of heaven there." You know what? We've neglected that land. We can treat it better without tearing down all the trees. It might not be as pristine as Gibson Woods, but it can be a beautiful park that is usable to us and not just something we ignore. So that when I hike there with my dog, I'm seeing people's fires and trash. And come on, we can treat it better than that. It's valuable. Let's treat it as it deserves. Thank you.
68 houses and two apartment buildings, another falsehood. False. This is a bridge. Listen. The purpose of the bridge for me is a few, alright? Obviously, kids going over, stop trains is unacceptable. We all know that. It's happening and it's unacceptable. Traffic. Moving around Hesville comes to a complete standstill when trains are blocking all the intersections. And when they block all intersections, they'll block for days. Like during the holidays this year. For like three days straight, this train didn't move. What does that do to Hesville? You can't move in a car, you can't move around the city. And then I hear a lot of experts talking about response times, which I find funny because I've been mayor for 20 years and I'm not even an expert enough to give you an opinion on response times. But I do know this, talking with my fire teeth. The response time right now from Station A to Hess School, which is the farthest point. Let's get that in our mind. Where Station A is, to Hess School, with a stop train, over 10 minutes. Completely unacceptable. Over 10 minutes. Think about that. If there's a situation where kids need help in Hess School with a stop train, you got like a 50/50 chance on whether there's a stop train or not. Over 10 minutes for a paramedic to get to Hess School. With the train not there, it's more like three minutes, which is acceptable. Alright? But we can't count on that. With this bridge built over the top, it's easier access to Hess School from Station A. Fact. So, response times, important. The kids, vital. Quality of life, movement of traffic around Hesville, super important. I hear a lot of people talking about, "This is the only thing you guys are trying to do and that's not gonna be accomplished." Well, I disagree. I've been mayor 20 years. I'm running for reelection right now. And the only reason I say that is I don't have an opponent. And I think part of the reason I don't have an opponent is because people trust me to try to do the right thing for our residents. Let me tell you something. I've been mayor 20 years. And when I talk to Hesville residents, the number one complaint by far over crime, over everything, is stop trains. I figured out a plan where the state is gonna pay for 75% of the cost, where the state has analyzed all the different options. They've looked at all the different options and the state chose this preferred route. If it's built, the state's gonna pay for the majority of it. And it's gonna get us in our cars over the stop trains. It'll get people in bikes over stop trains, traffic will move in Hesville. That's a fact. Let me tell you something. If we turn down this money, like a couple people have suggested, just get a tunnel. Let me tell you how it works in government. This process is about seven years where we are right now. If we turn down this money, you'll be here 10 years from now talking about stop trains and nothing will be done. That's a fact. We want a tunnel. Fine, if that's the choice we're gonna make, they will kill this project in its tracks. They will take that money and give it to Griffith or Munster or Highland, who will be more than happy, funny enough, a lot of their residents are here. They'll be more than happy enough to spend this money in their community and we'll be sitting here in Hesville complaining about stop trains. That's a fact. So let me tell you guys, I wanna do one little exercise before I relinquish. Do me a favor. If you're an actual Hammond resident, could you please raise your hand? Now, out of all these people raising your hand, I appreciate you raising your hand. If you support this train, keep your hands in the air, please. If you support the train, keep your hand in the air. If you don't, put it down. Excuse me, the bridge, I apologize. If you support the bridge, yeah, sorry. If you're a Hammond resident, support the bridge, raise your hand.
How many of those are citizens?
If you're a Hammond resident and you don't support, raise your hand. My job is to represent Hammond, Indiana. Listen. My job is to represent the city of Hammond and to solve problems in the city of Hammond. I get hired by the residents of the city of Hammond and I figured out a plan that's gonna solve these problems. I appreciate the state and Endot for putting the money up to help solve a problem in the city of Hammond. And it will solve it. And I know that these are controversial. If you're an elected official, the easiest thing in the world is to do nothing. If they're telling me to do nothing, if that's really what you're telling me to do, we'll be sitting here. Now, be careful about who you want to lead your community. Because if we're gonna listen to the crowd and they say, "Turn the money down", don't complain when those trains are stopped for four days. Don't complain when you can't get around Hesville. Be careful who you listen to. We've researched this, we've talked to the community, we got free money, and we want more. If we turn this down, you'll be here 10 years from now looking at stop trains in Hesville. God bless you all. Thank you for caring about your community.
Okay, next I have Jeff Smith, Ernie Romero, and Teresa Maciel.
Hello, my name's Jeff Smith. I'm the fire chief. I'm just here to talk about two things, is the response times and your ISO rating that your homeowner's insurance is set by. Number one, the response times that the mayor spoke of is very true. From Station A to get to Hess would be three to four minutes with no train. If the train was there, we'd have to reroute. The idea of Parrish Avenue, in my sense, and I don't wanna speak for PD, but I will. With Parrish Avenue being centrally located between Klein Avenue and Kennedy Avenue, with that being in the middle, once we get over the tracks to 78th, we don't go left or right, I mean, we don't go left all the time to go east. We go left or right. We gotta get back to the other side of the city, to the Borman, or we get to the east side of Parrish Avenue. So to get, to go to Grand, it's kind of increasing the response times to get back to the west side, to get on the west side of Parrish. Our ISO rating, two years ago, we had a study done by the insurance service organization who sets the rating of the city. We went from a 3.5 to a 2.7. A lot of that has to do with water supply, which we have great water supply in the city. A lot of it has to do with dispatching, that's controversial sometimes, equipment that we keep on our fire trucks, the amount of equipment that we have on our fire trucks, the amount of personnel we have, the training. One of the things is response times. When we got our rating and it went down, we were happy. But we asked them, "What can we do to get it to come down?" Because they only come about once every seven, eight years. And the first thing they said were, "Response times because of the railroad crossings", which we had no control of the railroad crossings because they were here. But we find a way to get over them. That's what they told us. So Parrish Avenue, in my point of view, and I don't, like I said, I'll speak for PD, with it being centrally located from Kennedy to Klein Avenue in the middle, once we get over the tracks, we go left or right. If we're farther east and it's farther west, then we have to come back, which still increases our response times. The overpass, Parrish Avenue, in my opinion, and a lot of people's opinion, is the way to go.
Hello, everyone. Hello, family that are watching at home. I just wanna say, trains don't bother me. And that's just me. I was a Chicago truck driver for years, city and highway. I have a lot of patience, I guess. I have a lot of patience. I'm sorry, I'll start over. My name's Ernie Romero. I lived here in Hammond for 30 years. I moved here because it was safer from where I come from. I won't tell you where because people get offended. Trains don't bother me. Like I was saying, I was a Chicago truck driver for years, city and highway. So, but that's just me. I got a lot of patience for traffic. I got a few things to talk about, but I guess the main ones should be the kid's safety and response times. When you go into East Chicago, you get off Klein, you go down Columbus Drive, get to that first stoplight, there's an overpass for the kids to walk to school. It used to be a tunnel. Then they covered that and they made that overpass. Simple solution. Response times. I understand the response times. There's a simple solution. It would help the problem if the firemen's stations had cameras, if they had cameras hooked up at the rail crossings. And they had access at the stations. They would know ahead of time, excuse me, they would know ahead of time if there's a train there. I mean, I'm sure it would help the situation. I don't, okay. Now, and also touching on safety, what's gonna be done? What type of security will be added to monitor the riffraff that might come off of that overpass? I live right next to the barber shop. That thing's gonna come down right next to my driveway. It's only gonna take one or two hooligans to come to my house and possibly kill us. Heaven forbid. Now, with that being said, this is gonna cost me money. I'm gonna have to put up a security fence. I don't know what kind of security fence the city's gonna put up or the state. But it's not gonna be enough to protect me or my family. I'm gonna have to put up a security fence. I'm gonna have to buy more and better guns. I'm gonna have to get a couple of police trained German Shepherds. I'm gonna have to build a kennel for them, a dog run. Not to mention the cleanup I'm gonna have to do, oh my god. Let's see. And speaking of my home, there's a lot of remodeling that I had to postpone. I mean, what was the point of remodeling if there was possibility of taking the house? Now, they're telling me they're not, but that could change. So I still can't do anything until this is all final. I might be gone by then. I'm 66 years old. Let's see, there's a few things, other things here. I guess, I guess that's about it for me. Let's see. Let me go over my list here real quick. I don't wanna miss anything. I know we're on a time limit here. I'm trying to hurry and talk fast. I'm surprised I haven't stuttered here. Okay, I think I covered all my points. I'm sure I'll think of other stuff when I get out of here. But I bought that house because, 30 years ago, because I knew it was gonna be in a central location for my family to have access to me, for babysitting my grandkids, great-grandkids, stuff like that. And it turned out to be true. All my family lives in Hesville, except for one daughter. So that works for us. In that backyard, I get deer, I get eagles, I get hawks, I get red foxes, I get coyotes, rabbits, raccoons. I even, I have even seen a pair of great white northern owls, which are not seen around here. They're more up north. And it's a shame that they're gonna do this. It's a real shame. It used to look like the North Woods in my backyard till all my pine trees got sick. Huge, tall pine trees. Y'all got sick, I chopped down 15 of them. And I still have not gotten used, three years now, of seeing nothing. Used to be beautiful. See, looking out there in the wintertime, and it wasn't depressing because it was all green. That's what we're gonna be looking at, at the woods back there. Nothing but concrete, asphalt, traffic, noise. I guess that's all I got. I'm sure I got more, but I'm gonna cut it short. All the people have to talk. Thank you very much for your time.
Good evening, everybody. Oh my god. Please excuse me, I don't do public speaking. I have been living here for 14 years. I work here at Scott Middle School and I live across the street. I live on Grand Avenue. All my kids are either gone or at Morton. But we started over here in Hess on the train. And so I have been greatly impacted by the trains. My kids have been impacted by the trains. Their friends have been impacted by the trains. And I looked at the layout and I completely understand like the gist of the whole thing. But the idea that this street here that's got three schools is not highly impacted or that the volume of traffic is not as high, please forgive me, but that sounds kind of ridiculous because I've been living on this street for 14 years. And we got the highest traffic Monday through Friday, every morning and every afternoon, and even in-between time. Because if we have parades, if we have people visiting homes, you know, it's just, there's a lot of traffic. And that route will not help anybody. I mean, I understand the idea of it helping, but honestly, I live here, it won't help me. Like, when I was working on the other side of the tracks, it wouldn't have helped me because I wouldn't be able to get to it anyway. So, and then the, I'm looking at the list of locations for consideration and, I mean, call me simple-minded, but can't we just like make an overpass on the stinking train route? Like, we're not messing with trees, homes, or anything like that? Like, can't we just go from one side of the train track problem where there's trees, where y'all wanna start everything, and just keep it going all the way into the end of maybe back here? That way only the train has to do it and then you guys have an underpass, I guess, so to say, like a bridge, that way regular traffic can just keep going and kids can just keep walking. I mean, I don't know if it's cheaper, I don't know if it's possible, but to me, it just makes sense to not impact the roads or the houses or our environment and just figure out some kind of way to just impact that railroad track. Make, just, so I just, I don't know. Maybe I'm just simple-minded and I'm not an engineer or anything like that. or anything like that, but to me, it makes no sense to impact that whole area, and me and my family and all the families that live down Grand Avenue and down 173rd or on the other side of trying to get here where all the schools are, it just makes more sense to do something that is going to benefit our kids, because that jumping the train thing, I was the crazy parent that was yelling at the kids, telling them not to be jumping the tracks. And if I knew any of their parents, I was calling the parents. I was calling Hess Elementary and saying, hey, you've got kids jumping tracks. I mean, I told my kids, don't even think about it. But I mean, having to drive all the way around just to get my kids to elementary school, it makes no sense to me. So if you guys are going to try to figure something out, underpass, overpass, I don't care what kind of pass, maybe, just maybe, we can figure out a way where not so many places are being impacted, and just the simplest answer, if it's possible, can we figure it out? Just make a bridge right the dag on train tracks, and let the trains go over everybody, and let us just keep going about our business. That's it.
I have John Ratijak, Art Gross, and Devin Wick.
Okay, I do have a stake in all this, what's going on.
Let me show you. That's my house, right?
John Ratijak. I was born and raised in Hessville, 7600 Block in Montana, which is on the south side of tracks. I went to Morton High School. I walked for the first three years before I finally got a car. We went down Grand Avenue all the time. We crossed them tracks all the time. We hopped over the trains all the time. And it's not going to change because you put a bridge two miles down. It's not going to change. If I was still back in school, I'd be doing the same stupid stuff, going over them, the same railroad cars. So where they're putting it, it's not going to help, to me. At least with Morton High, with any of the other schools, Scott School here, it's not going to be a beneficial thing. The fire chief, I understand going like straight down Parish, where it does keep the time to a minimum, because it is almost straight, and once they get across the tracks, it could, like he said, go left and right. I understand that. But to cut through there, it's not going to help this area whatsoever. You go back to where I showed you where I live, since I've been there, I built that house. First, I bought a house on the south side of the tracks on Montana, and six years later is when I built. I built that when I closed on a house in 1994, January 1994. Why did I buy that? It was a subdivision. People I worked with, I worked with the city for 35 years. I was told I was even stupid for building a house in Hessville, because the neighborhood was going to be going. But I did, I built my house, and been there ever since. One of the reasons I built it is because it was just a one-way-in, one-way-out. You had, on the backside, you had the woods. What was back there, I see, like the one gentleman said, there's deer, there's coyote, there's fox, raccoons, the hawks, you see it all back there. What's going to happen to that? And where I live, I've never had an issue. I've had my car broken into because I was dumb and left it unlocked, so somebody took some stuff out of it. That's happened maybe twice in the neighborhood. Now, you go ahead and put that roadway right behind my backyard, where they could see everything, and not just my yard, but all the neighbors going around there, and you got overpasses look up there and everything like that, what's going to happen to crime in my area? I said I worked for the city for 35 years, I was a police officer. I worked this area. And the trains have always been a problem. I understand that. And working this area, I learned different ways how to be able to make it around the tracks, which stop trains. And that's something that you, my time's up? Okay. I'll let it up, but I'm not saying we don't need an overpass and we need something, but I don't think this is the solution here. I think it needs to be looked in a little bit more, and whether, I spoke with Mr. Rakos, he said that it's probably a stupid idea of mine to raise the tracks where you already see the tracks, and you already see the eastbound both sides. What's so wrong with making a bridge going over one of them streets to give you that access where you're not tearing up anything? And the kids will not have that issue anymore crossing the street if you could raise the railroad tracks itself. That's pretty much all I could say. One last thing, Scott was at my house. We've been buddies for, since grade school. And he knows I'm not happy with what's going on, and he tried to talk me about it, but when he came back and I showed him my backyard, how it's all opened up, you got the woods, I even built a house for the raccoons, but, I'm sorry. He says, I didn't know this was back here like this. He goes, if there's a house for sale, I'd like to buy one and move back here. He wasn't, he didn't know that. And those are the things that you have to, right, Scott? Yeah. But those are some of the things that you have to look at. And I'm not upset with NDOT, it's just that I think that there could be alternatives and a better plan on how to do this, and speaking with the people that are actually affected, like this is today. Thank you.
I'm Art Gross, and whoa, 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 I reside down the street here with the coyotes and stuff like that. No more porties. But we do have woodpeckers, we have owls, we have coyotes in our backyard, and behind a fence line over here off 169th or 173rd, and Nebraska, not Nebraska, New Hampshire, that wooded area in there, I'd like to speak one minute about that area. We have with us tonight a hero of Hessville. There was a painting company that was going to put some paint in that wooded area. This lady, Roxanne Barton, so many years ago campaigned Hessville and defeated the paint company from putting a chemical place over there. She did it. No politician cared. Nobody cared. But this lady cared and had the faith to believe that it would destroy our wildlife and our neighborhood and our way of life in this town. It's ironic how things go. When I was a kid, I thought adults were responsible people. As I grew older, I seen and seen I was becoming much more like them. It's ironic how this problem has existed so long that you would think that they would give us options a year ago, maybe three or four. This is how much money we could get from the state of Indiana. Thank you, Indiana. And this is what, three options we could do, but it didn't arise like that.
Munster has a beautiful underpass.
And Munster, they have a beautiful underpass, you know, and they're going to have a good train station there, and everything is going to be beautiful. But they, they got an underpass. I don't see what the problem is with the underpass or raise the train. Raise, how much is stocks in the railroad company? Can anybody in this room really afford 100 shares of stock in the railroad company? I doubt it. They got the money to do it.
How many people have been through that underpass in Munster? How many people have been through that underpass in Munster?
How many people have, she wants to ask, how many people have been in, under that beautiful underpass in Munster? It is gorgeous. And it's great excess, north and south on Cayman.
That's what we need.
And we need something like that, too. I know, you know, we've got a lot of train tracks that need to be, you know, issued, but they're not so serious as they are in our area. In our area, there's better solutions than raising a bridge for us to walk on and have to walk a mile to get to the excess ramps. So my time is up, but just to remind you that this lady, what she did worked, and I hope something like this might work, and the mayor might reconsider and say, you know, maybe we do have some options, the deadline's not until such and such time, maybe there are a couple more options we can have. Let's look into them a little bit better. Maybe the contractors they have in mind, well, I don't know.
The wrong ones.
It's all about money.
Hello, everyone. My name is Devin Wick. I'm the superintendent of parks and director of forestry operations for the city of Hammond, but that's not the only capacity I'm here tonight. I'm losing half of my backyard to this project. I live on 173rd Street. You would think I'd be opposed to losing my land. I'm like most of the Hessville residents, I'm tired of trains. Now, I'll keep this quick. I have an observation and some statistics. My first observation is everyone talks about these wonderful woods. It's my backyard, I've walked it. If half of you would go in there and cart out trash, maybe it would be a better forest. Now, statistics, in the last six years, I have planted over 1,800 trees in this city. That was through the COVID years. We are on track to plant another 500 this year. We are into our 14th year as a Tree City USA status. We're doing wonderful things for the urban forest in this city. So all the complaints, I don't see another solution. All the other options are, they're just not possible. We have the solution. Thank you.
My name is Francis Powers. I'm from Kokomo, and last year I moved to Gary, and now I work 40 hours a week in Hammond. So I personally cannot vote in this election. I do not have high personal stakes. I've been, listen, I have been hanging around to learn about politics and support my friend. I have a little nephew in Kokomo who's about to turn 10, and he walks to school every day. And I personally, I'll, you know, I'll tear down a whole woodland area to keep that little kid safe. I'll do anything for that little dude. I have met Rozek, and talked to him, and shook his hand, and he's been okay. I'm a suspicious person, and I'm learning a lot about politics right now, and he's, yeah, he's okay. And I came in today not knowing what to do, and I guess I met Mr. Rakos, he was at the door, and he did not introduce himself to me, or shake my hand, or talk to me. And he actually sat right behind me while everybody else was talking, and while everyone's talking about how personally affected, how long they've lived here, and how they feel about, you know, children's safety on a train, and delays, and EMT services, and the relationship they have to these dunes, and all their questions and concerns, and concerns about the inequity they face in their lives. And he has sat there and made little jokes, and snickered at people, and giggled his whole way through. So, you know, little dude, little dude in his big button over there, standing right there, and I would think that an elected official who's running for election would have a little more respect for their constituents and people that they are making big decisions about. So, yeah, that's all I have to say.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Andy Short, and I'm not going to stand up here, and I'm not going to point fingers at anybody. Everybody know who they are, everybody know what they have done in the past and what they're planning on doing in the future. I give honor to God who's the head of my life, and I hope he's the head of your life. I'm here to let you guys know, I am for the bridge, and this is the reason why I have been a part of... Huh?
You're a city employee, so that's why you're here.
It's good to see you again. It's, I am an employee of the city of Hammond. I am your police chief. I came on in 1988. The very first call I had was out here in Hessville, which means that I left 5925 Cayman Avenue to get to Hessville, to get past trees. The very first call was a fight at Pioneer Tavern. Some of you probably remember that. It was a big fight, big fight. I'm in there, and we did what we had to do, but it took me a while to get there. My job is to protect and serve. It's hard for me to protect and serve when I can't get to you. Can you imagine, I think it's Greenbrier, trying to get to Greenbrier where a lady's in there fighting somebody? I hear her voice, I hear dispatchers trying to talk to the lady, saying that, hey, they're coming, they're coming, we can't get to her. I think I'm in the car with Jeff Long. We either got to go either around to 8094, or we might have to go get to Summer Street, or we might have to go to Michigan. That's a long time to get to you guys. Is this what you want, for me to take another 20 minutes to get to you guys? I hope not. I really hope not. I hope that you want me to get there within three minutes. And the only reason that stopped me from getting to you guys under three minutes is that train. I am for the train.
Hello, I'm John Hindal. I live at 7115 Montana Avenue. Now, I haven't heard at all, the original plan, if I'm not wrong, Mayor, showed a cutoff coming down 171st, tying into the curve of the new bridge plan. So 171st would be continued open. Now, that doesn't show on this drawing. Yes.
That's a local project we're taking. These guys are saying...
They explained that to me, that you're going to take care of that. So this has been, all right, this has been a two-tier problem. It's our children, which take up, and I'm not saying, I worked for the Hammond Schools 34 years. I run these routes every day. Our kids use this road an hour in the morning, an hour after, when school gets out. The rest of the time, it's a car problem. It's a neighborhood problem, it's a response problem. I'm getting really tired. I belong to the Dunes Buster, so I appreciate everything you do, I'm a tree person, but I'm tired of hearing this compared to the Munster underpass. If you take the footprint of that underpass and overlay it on this map, you take out all the parking for the people that have apartments at Greenbrier. You can't exceed a 5% grade to go under a track for walking or bicycles. You're basically going to start your underpasses at Grand, you're going to go past the log cabin, the people that were sitting here that's almost losing a little bit, they're losing a bit of their property. That's where the underpass comes out, so you have to take all of the houses out. You got to go, whatever you see on a bridge that goes over, you have to turn it under to go under. It's just physics. Now, I hope that the mayor or the city of Hammond, to address the kid problem, is what the lady brought up. A metal walk set of stairs, there should be one here at Grand and one here at 173rd. They're not handicap accessible, but as she said, Hammond provides transportation or parents. It's not two miles when you come down 171st to go to the bridge. Otherwise, everybody thinks you're going to have to go Grand to 169th to Parish to get on the bridge to 173rd, and you're not. My neighborhood doesn't like 171st because we're going to be open to traffic. We have illegal parkers that park there constantly, the school buses, Scott School, you can't get out at 169th with Morton. The traffic is horrible. So the buses for Scott will use 171st, which makes the traffic right at the end of my street, but I think I'm willing to put up with that. The woods, I've been in, I'm a woods person, I've been in those woods maybe six times. They're not safe, they're full of garbage, there's nothing but drugs. They're not safe, they're full of garbage, there's nothing but drugs. Your kids get out there, your daughters get pregnant, everything else that comes out of the woods. The gangs hang in the woods. The apartments shoot into the woods all during New Year's and Fourth of July. They shoot the guns into the woods, off the balconies. But that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Well, thank you, everybody, for all of the comments. This is not the end of the comment for this study. It really is just the beginning. The comment period, it will be extended. It normally goes two weeks past the hearing, we're extending it an extra two, so four weeks. So, May twenty-sixth is the comment deadline. So, I encourage you to submit comments up until that. Comment forums are available here tonight, also on the website, also at the resource locations. How to submit those comments is written on the forum. And good evening, and we will stick around a few more minutes if you do have some additional questions, but thanks again for coming.